Can't get my mic to start. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, councillors. Welcome to this meeting of the Planning Applications Committee. I just got an announcement to make before we start, which is the usual one about the meeting being broadcast. So please note that the meeting is being filmed for a live stream available on the council's website and a recording will be available after the meeting. We have one public speaking item this evening and one of the speakers will be connecting to the meeting by phone and we will hear from him on the screen. Thank you. And then have we got agreement on the minutes of the last meeting? Thank you. Any declarations of interest? No. We have no questions from either the public or councillors, which takes us on to the site visit report on page 11. Julie, I think you're going to introduce this, are you?
Yes, thank you Chair. So listed on the top of the page is the two new sites. We've got two applications in that will be coming to the committee in due course. Officers aren't recommending that either of those are a matter for you to site visit. The site in the oracle is the House of Fraser site that you can readily see and have a look and probably are familiar with it already. And we don't think there's much more to go into. See the other site, which is in that island of road between the 833 Leaf Road and the old Rosekorn Lane. In terms of the list on the reserve list, so you did the site visit to Central Club on Thursday. The Cavesham Park visit, the BBC site, that's scheduled to be visited on the 31st of August. The case officer is checking with BBC at the moment to confirm that that date will be acceptable to them. So assume that there is and that will be an accompanied visit to that site on the 31st of August. And then the other two sites, so I think there's Amherst Lane and Dwyer Road, we're suggesting that that be an accompanied site visit, but we'll do that one in September, ready for those two reports to come hopefully in October. Thank you.
Thank you. Several people indicating councillor Emberson.
Yeah, just on the Colley one, I probably agree on balance. There's probably no need for a site visit. But what I would say is it is important to note the sort of context. I'm sure it would be in any officer report. But if and when something tracks, I think it is helpful for members to do a bit, if they don't know the area, to do a bit of Google Maps just to get an understanding of the context that that is in. And there's been a lot of change there with some permitted developments. So I just wanted to flag that.
Yeah, I was going to mention the bottom two, Amherst Lane, Dwyer Road, God's Country Southcote. I take it we're going to get into Amherst Lane because Dwyer Road is just a big fence with a lot of shrubs inside, I suppose. You know, what the purpose would be for that. But also it'd be good, I think it would be quite useful for Amherst Lane if we could get in, I suppose, to the buildings. Because there's several buildings there, isn't there? I don't know what your views are, I'm just asking.
Well, I think if you're going to go there, obviously it makes sense for you to be able to go into the site and see the context. But we've got time between now and September to sort that out to make sure it's safe for you to access it. If it isn't safe for you to access it, then maybe we can do our video like we did before. You never know. Just risk the officers going on site.
As an aside, thank you very much for last week's video. I think that's very helpful for people. Councillor Gavin.
Thank you Chair. I do feel a bit like a broken record on this, but Curzon Club notes for the unaccompanied visit. I think this is the third time I've asked about this. So really, what's the status? Is this application about to come or not? Because it was agreed to have an unaccompanied site visit back in December. We're now in July. So just wondering what the update is on this application. Thank you.
So thank you councillor. It's gone through quite a significant round of amendments that we're still waiting on some additional information. But once we have everything, I will issue a briefing note so that the site visit can carry on. But we wanted to make sure that what you were looking at and what lined up with the application was being proposed is the same so that you don't have to go back again or feel you might have missed something that has changed since going. So I anticipate, we've had the majority of the amendments now, so I anticipate getting the rest by the end of July. So hopefully I'll be able to issue that early August and then you should have the rest of August and early September.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you for the update.
Thank you for that. I'm not seeing anybody else, so can we note all that? And in particular, I suspect some people will be on holiday on the 31st of August, which is the site visit date for the BBC site. If we could get another video done, that would be helpful for people who may be returning from holiday that weekend and they could look at it in time for committee, please. Okay, thank you. Note that and move on to our planning appeals on page 15.
I'm not sure we have anything to add. You've got, there was the appeal report though summarising the hearing outcome on nine Upper Crown Street, where we've got a later application already. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Lang.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I had a quick read through this, well not a quick read actually, but most important thing I think is, I think the appeal only just scraped through, if I'm perfectly honest. Page 22, very substantial sentence and it actually starts, very substantial weight in favour of the proposal. However, he concluded that the harm arising from the proximity of building two to the terrace houses would outweigh these benefits. So it was just about proximity too and basically overlooking. So that's not a lot to work with. And I'm expecting the application to come through, which will be judged on its merits. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on that? No. In which case we note that and move on to applications for prior approval. Anything to add to that?
Not aware of anything, thank you Chair, no.
Anybody want to ask anything or say anything about this? No, can we note that then? Thank you. And then we've got Julie Williams' report on the first quarter performance, which is on page 29.
Thank you Chair. So this is sort of recording how we've been getting on in the last quarter of the year. We have information to compare with previous quarters of the previous year. Just to point out that because of the few numbers of major applications received, that's the stats can vary significantly between the quarters. So last year we had nil percent performance and then the following quarter it was 100% performance. That's just the way the stats work. I'm afraid that it looks like a brilliant turnaround, but it's actually just the way it happens. But Jenny just recalled that with the new team in place, you know, the progress is going well. A number of applications have dropped off, but that's actually meaning that officers now have time to actually, you know, concentrate on getting the work done and also doing some added bits of work. Some managing to find time now to do some professional development work. We were out in Forbury Gardens measuring trees and learning about, Sarah Hanson gave us a little course on that. And Steve and Richard are also running sort of lunchtime seminars with the teams to give them more training on different aspects of work. So we're now to sort of get a bit more added work for the teams to sort of improve their knowledge and their experience of the planning world, which previously we just didn't have the resources to be able to do that. We had our sort of heads down just doing the application work and not being able to sort of get some, you know, more of the sort of learning into what they were doing. So it's been a good year, I think, so far and certainly a good quarter so far this year. And also pleased to be able to report on the building control team. So the dream is coming together, so to speak. So I had two new trainee building control surveyors start on Monday, permanent members of staff. So that's really good. We are finally having a team build a permanent staff, which is something that we really do need. My team leader is doing great work in trying to turn around the team and improve our processes, et cetera. And so now we're starting to try and market ourselves so we can compete with the approved inspectors and make sure that we are picking up as much business as we can in the town. And there's a little paragraph in there about the planning enforcement team. So confirming what we were saying to you last time about a report that we have now in place, a principal enforcement officer who is, he's joined us a few weeks ago now. So it's still two early days to sort of report back to you on his progress, but he certainly has made a difference to the team in terms of, with his ideas of how they can tackle the backlog of work, but also to set up new processes for dealing with the new applications coming in, new inquiries coming in. And so hopefully we should be able to be in a position to report back to you. I'm not going to offer September, maybe for the quarterly, when I bring the quarterly report for next time in October, then I think that would be a good opportunity for us to provide you with more information on the enforcement work at that time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions to Julie? Councillor Lang?
Yeah, thank you, thank you Julie. Quite encouraging actually. I know you clarified why it looks encouraging, but you know, performance is up, income's down slightly. Welcome, obviously Officer Lloyd to the team. I thought you said dream then, and that's what I dream of all the time enforcement sometimes. It's good that we put a lot of pressure on you with enforcement and we know it's work in progress. And I keep telling, you know, colleagues it's work in progress, but it really is reclassification of certain things and we can really start to get on to it. I mean, a lot of the stuff is the backlog, but of course we are reactive to other enforcement, which is ongoing all the time. So you've sort of got to try and separate the two things. Good to hear that building control will be going for us, sort of like try and get an increased share in market share, to use a capitalist term, but it's the way of the world. And no, I'm not going to overplay it, but I'm quite positive the way things are going and I'll be the one with my feet held to the fire. So let's hope that we see some good results. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing anybody else? In which case can we thank you for that Julie? And as you say, there'll be further updates particularly on enforcement later on in the year. And yeah, thank you to all of you for, I know it's been a difficult time with not many staff and so on, so it's good to see it coming together. Thank you. Right, can we note that then and move on to the proposed tree works in Barclay Avenue on page 33? And Sarah Hanson's going to report on that.
Thank you Chair. As explained in the report, the Town and Country Planning Act requires applications for works to council-owned or maintained TPO trees to be decided by a committee of the council, which is not responsible for managing the land to which the application relates. The law also requires a public notice to be displayed for at least 21 days, giving details of the proposed works. A notice was put up on the Barclay Avenue railings on the 22nd of May and left for the required period. Ar paragraph 2.1 of the report details the proposed tree works. The works are not considered to be harmful to the tree's appearance or future health and are in line with good arbicultural management to appropriate manage the trees for highway clearance and to avoid conflict with adjacent St Paul's Court. No objections or comments were received as a result of the public notice and it's therefore recommended that the works be approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody got your comments? Councillor Emberson?
Yeah, just a quick one because it's in Colley. Yeah, fully support this and grateful for this tracking. And I think, you know, it just goes to show the importance of these works and making sure that, you know, the trees are kept as healthy as possible. And I note that there was radio silence on the consultation and suspect when the trees are being touched, people will be in touch because we've had some other tree stuff going on unrelated to this. So it's good that, you know, it tracks through and is approved, et cetera. So I just wanted to pass my thanks to Sarah for the report and fully support these works.
Thank you. Anybody else? Can I see all those in favour of approving this? Thank you, that's unanimous. So that takes us to the end of the part one reports. It takes us on to the planning applications to be considered. We've only got two this evening, but I'm going to have to take them in reverse order because we have public speaking on the London Street site, you know, it's that former Central Club. So we're going to take that first and then we'll come back to item nine. So we have public speaking, but I'm going to ask the case officer to introduce it first and then we'll introduce the public speakers, who are the objector Jeff Assimi and the agent, as we've heard, who's coming in by phone, Stuart Hall. So when you're ready, over to Tom Bradfield.
Thank you Chair. So this site is known as Central Club, 36 to 42 London Street. It's on the western side of London Street on the corner of Mill Lane, which is just to the south of the IDR. It currently comprises of a part, single story, part two story building, which has been vacant for approximately 15 years. The last use of the building was as a community facility known as Central Club. On the northern side of the building is a Black History mural, which runs the length of the site and is an asset of community value. The site is within the marketplace London Street Conservation Area and there are a number of grade two listed buildings adjacent to the south of the site and opposite the site on the eastern side of London Street. The site is allocated in the local plan for development for residential with potential for ground floor community provision. And the application seeks to demolish parts of the existing building and construct a four story building, which would contain 17 flats and a community facility at ground floor level. The mural on the northern side of the site would be retained, protected and restored as part of the proposals. And the front elevation of the existing building, which faces onto London Street, would also be retained and restored with some alterations. The mix of residential units provided would be seven one bedroom flats, seven two bedroom flats and three three bedroom flats. Two units would be provided as affordable housing, one one bedroom unit and one three bedroom unit, which equates to 11.8%. The officer's recommendation is that the proposal is approved, subject to conditions and a legal agreement, which would secure the affordable housing, zero carbon offset contribution of £12,240 and employment and skills contribution of £2,192.60 as well as ensuring the rental charge for the community facility is capped at peppercorn rent.
Thank you very much. Now, we have, as I said, Jeff Assimi who wants to speak against the proposal. Would you like to come forward to the microphone? Thank you. And if you want to switch on your mic and then tell us what your connection is to this and then we'll start to time your five minutes after that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jeff Assimi. We occupy number 46 London Street. We are separated from 3642 London Street by a distance of 2.9 metre which represents the objectors of listed buildings and others that are affected on this development. There are a long list of issues that this application has not addressed. The existing building is a single story in most parts and with the exception of a double story to the rear. The front elevation is lower than the attached building at number 44, a clear respect to cluster of listed buildings that are attached to the side of 3642 London Street. Please refer to drawing 0500, existing elevations. The proposed elevation drawings 0511 to 13 inclusive completely ignores the skyscape pattern of the roof lines and adjacent listed buildings, which follow the fall of the street. In fact, the proposal is much higher than the adjacent building at number 44 London Street. Most of the buildings adjacent to proposed sites are only two story high, whereas the development proposes a four story, which is almost double the size of the neighbouring properties. If one looks at the rear elevations of the adjacent listed buildings, they all have terracing and cascading features, whereas the proposal is just a single line of mass and density, the wall thing that adjacent listed buildings. There are a pattern on the street scene for shopfront elevation adjacent to number 3642. They all have a similar shopfront office penetration. This proposal completely missed this point. The site is of an important focal point historically and position wise. The proposed development represents two square boxes extruded with little or no features or details. It is a flat roof opposite the historic listed building known as Great Expectation, where Charles Dickens Estate, with colonnade features. In fact, the car park in Queen's Road has more, which is less than eight yards away from this site, has got more features than the proposed development. As highlighted by Conservation Area Adversary Committee, the proposed development is too tall by sheer mass and density and negative impact on listed buildings. The existing building has access from both London Street and to the rear crossland roads. And the side access was meant only for emergency, whereas the proposed development's main access is from the side, where it is separated from listed buildings by 2.9 metre, where it is expected to serve for refuse collection, bicycle access point and occupants' access point. Although the noise assessment considered noise impact for the occupants of the site following the completion, it is totally, totally ignores the effect on the set of listed buildings, which are attached to proposed development during construction. Some of these listed buildings are part of the original part of Reading, going back to mid 1800s. Given the prominent location of the site, the elevations do not consider the street scene, mass and density or reflection on the age of cluster of listed building on the London Street, which are attached to the proposed development. Where are the required amenities space and landscaping for this site? Here we have a chance to create a landmark building. In reality, what we see here proposed is two boxes joined together with a huge mass and density. Thank you.
Thank you, that's just about the right time. Thank you for that. Would you like to stay there for a minute in case the committee has got any questions to ask you? Are there any questions to be asked? Not seeing anybody. In which case, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And we'll then dial in Stuart Hall to speak to us on behalf of the developers.
If you can press star six Stuart to unmute.
Thank you. Would you like to say, hello, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Would you like to just say who you are and what your connection is to this and then we'll start timing your five minutes?
Thanks. I'm Stuart Hall, I'm from Colony Architects and I'm representing the applicant.
Right, five minutes starting now.
Thanks very much for allowing me to speak and thanks Thomas for the introduction and for your work on this application. The Central Club is an important cultural landmark within the centre of Reading and has unfortunately remained derelict for 17 years when the youth club closed down. Over the last three and a half years, the design team, the applicant and Reading Council have engaged in extensive consultation and collaboration with local groups, design panels and heritage specialists to bring this scheme forward, gaining the support of the planning officers and now we're being heard at the committee tonight. So I can respond quickly to the objector, but obviously willing to answer questions after. The objections covered mainly heritage and design issues. And I would say that during that three and a half years of design development, we consulted with Historic England, the CAC, two different conservation officers, the Design Review Panel, the council's urban design officer and undertook an extended pre-app service before we got to where we are. So a lot of that work was done to get the proportions and the street scene right. For instance, stepping back the front facade and things like that. So we feel that we've worked very hard to address those issues already with many consultees. He also mentioned about a loss of privacy, especially on windows to the rear. Well, I bring it to your attention that the two main windows on the neighbouring property, which are likely to be subject to overlooking, are forested. And that was something that we took note of during the design. We also set back the courtyard to make that work better for everybody. And yeah, we've put a lot of work into making sure that this is the right building for a sort of a town centre location. My colleague Ed will now explain some of the details of the design.
So the proposal is for a residential development of 17 units, three of which are three bed family dwellings and two have been earmarked for affordable rental units. The scheme also retains a community use on the site, which we're in progress discussion with the local community group, who is keen to take on the space. As architects, we did find this site very challenging. It was full of design contradictions and, you know, it was quite tough to overcome these, but we feel we've got there. So furthermore, you know, you've got a residential accommodation being positioned on the edge of the IDR and the hustle must have a town centre and you've got to sort of try and make that work, which has seemed to successfully. It's also in a prominent corner position, but also in a sensitive conservation area. So you need to get the balance right between an architectural statement but being sort of sensitive setting. Furthermore, the site's on a bit of a slope, which makes access a bit tricky and that's made more of a problem when the existing building completely fills the site. So we've had to find ways and devices to make that happen with courtyards and external spaces. And as Stuart's already mentioned, there is an existing residential office property to the south and the proposal for courtyards and positioning windows is able to deal with that relationship. The accommodation is over four floors and all the dwellings have dual or south facing aspects allowing views away from the IDR. On the southern aspect, we've positioned a courtyard for residents to use as amenities space and help buffer the overlooking. Although it's only small, it does introduce very valuable green space and ecological enhancement. And furthermore, sort of improves the little street theme that runs between London Street and Crossland Road. But I think aside from these design factors, the most important part of this building remains its cultural icon status.
Can I let you know, you've only got 30 seconds left?
That's fine. And Stuart, just quickly put up on the mural.
So we've dealt with the mural, which is obviously an essential part of this application by being sensitive through design, through community engagement and most importantly, by engaging the work of Alan Howard, the original artist, to make sure that we treat the painting very, very carefully. Happy to answer questions on that.
Thank you, that's your time just up. Thank you for that. If you'd like to stay on the line and we'll see if there are any questions. Councillor? Oh, sorry, hello, councillor Williams.
Good evening. Hi, this is Josh, councillor Williams. Thank you very much for talking to us this evening. I've got three questions, if you'll indulge me and I'll try and read them out quick because I imagine other councillors will as well. The first is the access into the building. I attended the site visit, but I didn't fully understand what it was trying to do. I think it's dual access, residential and community use going through the same door into an open area with no roof, open to the elements. And I wasn't clear on why that had been designed in that way and I wasn't clear whether it was a positive thing and I wasn't clear And I wasn't clear on how it would be managed either with different requirements for access through that one door. I wonder if you could say a bit more about that? That was my first question, Chair.
Okay. If you want to answer that one first, probably best to do them one at a time.
Sure, sure. Thank you, councillor. I know you're quite correct with the name, that it was in the existing corner on London Street and not via the courtyard at the back. That is a secondary access for bins and cycles. The main access is on the corner and it goes via an external courtyard, which then allows the community use to use that space and also the residents to use it. We're also going to use that little courtyard space as a bit of a display that explains the mural as well. So it becomes a little external museum courtyard space. And the reason we've created that space is mainly to sort of get a bit more light into the building because the mural obviously kind of have windows in it. You've only got certain amounts of penetration that exist. So if you can create courtyards, it punches into the building and allows light to filter through. Secondly, we just saw the urban environment that is quite tough. Lots of cars, for example, lots of tarmac. You want to create a bit more of a better landscape where your front door is. And I think by setting the front door further in the building behind the facade, it just gives you a bit more breathing space and a little bit more of a quality environment when, when arriving to the community centre or to the residential units.
Thank you, Chair. And will, will that area be managed? Because there might be a condition on the doors opening for communities, but there'll be no condition on the.
Yeah, it is going to need to be managed. External to that, they're going to have the sort of nice glass screen there. But obviously residents will be able to access with, with your security, with the security system. And likewise, the community centre will open and close it depending on how, when they're open and when they're not, basically. And it might, and I think the intention is that the doors will probably remain open on a, let's say, I don't know, nine to five basis typically, just to allow that space to be slightly accessible to the sort of, the mural kind of explanation boards effectively.
On, on the point that you mentioned about, is it a positive or a negative? But it's very much a positive. So one of the things that we discovered when researching the mural was that it was actually quite difficult to find information about it. So we think that it's a really great addition to create this kind of semi-public space where there can be some sort of explanation of the mural or display artworks that are relevant to it or something like that, that give it a sort of a, you know, inlay notes or something like that, where, where the mural can actually have some, some, yeah, some, some explanations. And this would be the place to do that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair. Shall I push on as quick as I can? Question two was, one of the objectors raised the issue of fire and the fact that the community use area doesn't have a fire exit, as far as I can tell from, from looking at the plans. And it doesn't have, if I can add, a kitchen area, for example, or a, sorry, any kind of toilet, never mind a disabled toilet. And so it doesn't have kitchen, toilet or fire exit for a community area that obviously we hope a number of people will be in. I wonder if they could explain that?
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. I can, I can pick that up. The, obviously the layout of the community centre is, it needs to be agreed with the user. We've left it a bit open on the basis that we, we're not quite sure how they want to go. So it's a bit of a, bit of a shell at the moment. There will obviously be a kitchenette in there. There'll obviously be some toilets. And who knows, it might be a few toilets, might be quite a few more toilets. I, I, I can't put a figure on it. With respect to the fire exits and things, we do envisage that possibly there will be one of the doors, windows at the back of the courtyard, could, could be a door in, for an escape reason. But it's a bit of detail design depending on the internal layout basically and consultation with building control.
What, what you're talking about is similar to a shop fit out, which would usually be a separate package to, to the source of work that we're doing here.
Okay. Thank you very much. Right. Third one, quick as I can. Unit one, which is the smallest on the ground floor, on the ground floor there, which is listed as one of the affordable units, seems to have no natural light or ventilation to the bedroom area or to the bathroom. Am I reading that wrong or is that right? Is there no ventilation or light for those two rooms?
With, with, there is obviously a window to it. It's actually a sort of studio unit. What we've actually done is the, the window to the, to the bedroom is an internal window to the kitchen area. We've successfully done this on a couple of schemes in, in Reading, actually. And it's a very innovative way of getting natural borrowed light through a unit. But it, you know, it's a bit like having a sort of bed lift, but with a slight separation between the living space and the sleeping quarters, basically.
But there is ventilation to the bathroom, presumably?
Yeah, it will do. I mean, certainly there's the new part O that's come into building regulations recently that has meant that dwellings, new dwellings and flats in particular need ventilation. And given the, the position on the IDR, this, this building's probably going to be mechanically vented because we needed to control the acoustics. So that should be.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any more? Yeah, councillor Rowland.
Thank you and thank you for your presentation. Could I just get some basic clarity in regards to the two windows that are situated in the mural? As to how those will be protected and what, what in reference to unit six on the first floor, I believe, how that's treated also with lighting, not dissimilar to what councillor Williams had just suggested about unit four? Just kind of the lighting and the understanding of the treatment of those two windows in the mural. Thank you.
Thanks. So those two windows that actually, yeah, sort of puncture the, the mural are, as you rightly point out, a bit of a tricky issue, actually. When we started consulting with the, the black community and the, the director of the, the murals commissioning, Alan Howard, there was some discussion as to whether these windows should actually be kept or not. Because we didn't want to create any kind of controversy over altering the mural in any way other than to allow for its conservation, we didn't include any, any discussion over, over the potential for blocking up the windows. But Alan Howard, the original artist, well, the director of the, and the artist of a lot of the mural, and he, he actually thinks that those windows should be blocked up. And there are several good reasons to do that. As I say, we were not bold enough to, to do that and have that form part of this application. But I would say that when the community engagement process happens that is part of the mural restoration and Alan would very much be keen on, on talking about that. There's basically a lot of water ingress and cracking of the mural around those windows. And it would actually serve to protect the mural, the painted surface of the mural very, very well if those windows were replaced with, with blockwork. And, and that would also give an opportunity to infill that area with artwork. That's what the community want. That's not what we're proposing here, but that's a useful context for you. Does that get anywhere towards answering your question?
In part, actually. I wasn't really going down that route. I was trying to understand also in relation to unit six, which I wasn't quite sure whether these windows came near to or whether those are the windows that I was looking at for unit six.
Okay, I can pick up on that one then. So unit six has corner windows to the sort of living area, just above the entrance courtyard. But it also has a small floor to ceiling window to the sleeping part of the unit. It's sort of adjacent to the mural. It's because the mural at that point is probably about, I'd say, shoulder height. There, there's sufficient light and view from that sleeping compartment, and which has been tested in the daylight assessment. But I, I know what you mean. It does, it does also have the potential to share the windows that exist in the mural. But I think we're of the perspective that we just need to safeguard the mural for, for the sake of having a slightly taller window on a different elevation for, for unit six.
Okay, thank you. And I, I'm not trying to raise an issue about the windows that are currently in there. And I, I do trust that in further negotiations with Alan Howard, that that will all be addressed appropriately. So thank you for that response.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I do have a question over requiring clarification. And that is during the presentation, somebody on the, the call mentioned three property, three of the properties were for affordable housing. Now, is that correct when in the report we are told that there are only two? So I just want clarification over that, please.
Sure. There are, sorry, I, maybe it was a line off my, my clarity. But there are two units for affordable housing, but three, three bed dwellings, making the point that that's quite a good provision for a flattish scheme.
Seeing anybody. And as councillor Williams, you're not indicating again. No, sorry. No, I'm not seeing anybody else. So thank you very much for responding to the questions. And we will now move on to the discussion. I was wondering if case officer wanted to say anything at this stage or?
No, I don't think so. I don't think anything came up that, that the applicants didn't, didn't clear up.
It's all right, open for discussion. And councillor Moore, you're the one, only one indicating at the moment.
Thank you very much, Chair. I have a few general questions. I didn't think they were for developer. I just kind of wanted to bring them up. My first question, which I wasn't quite sure about, I mean, obviously this, I'm very, very pleased that after fifteen years, this is now, we've got a planning application for this. That's really good. Why, is there a reason why we want to keep the frontage on London Street in particular? I understand the mural, but I'm just wondering why the frontage for London Street? That's, that's one question. The other thing I have concerns about is the waste management. It says waste may be taken to the curb side on collection day. I'm just wondering how that will be managed, given it may cause an obstruction on London Street, which is a very busy road. And how will that be managed with the residents and the community centre? And just also a point that I'm disappointed it's only eleven percent of affordable housing. And I'd be understand, I'd like to answer more about the viability there as well. Thank you.
Do you want to respond to that?
Okay, so I'll, I'll just quickly go through them in turn. So the frontage on London Street, I believe that was, that's been retained as, it's considered it does provide sort of a positive contribution to the conservation area. I think I discuss it in, in the report in a bit more detail. And it provides a bit of continuity along that, that side of, of London Street in terms of how the street progresses towards it, towards the IDR from the sort of small scale listed buildings. And then retaining that frontage, that sort of human street level as you walk along with the setback above it means that if you're walking along that side of London Street, there's, there's very little that changes in terms of what you see as, as you walk along. So I think hopefully that clarifies that, that sort of side of things. In terms of the waste management, so you've put the ground floor plan up. That'd be great. So the, yeah, so you can see the storage in the, in the centre of the building there. Currently, the proposal is to, when collection is required, is to take the bins from there, not onto London Street, but onto Mill Lane at the back. And there's a condition which requires a waste management plan to be submitted to show how that would happen, when they would do that, who would be doing it, who'd be responsible, et cetera. So there wouldn't be any interference on London Street, which I understand is, could be, could be an issue. And then in terms of the affordable housing, so yes, as you say, it's, the offer is equates to eleven point eight percent. The applicant submitted viability report, which essentially justified that provision, it's been assessed by external survey, external surveyors working on our behalf, who are comfortable with it. Essentially, the, the, the issue, I suppose, relates to the complex construction and restoration of the mural, which is, causes, you know, significantly higher construction costs than if you were flattening the building and starting again, I suppose. And then also the provision of a community, community space, which obviously doesn't provide much in the way of rental income or, or any rental income, obviously has a, has a knock on impact on the, on the viability of the scheme as well. And so there's sort of a couple of gen, sort of more site specific reasons as to why, why we're not up at a higher percentage.
Thank you. Are you indicating councillor Lane? Oh, sorry, councillor Robinson. Councillor Yeoh's head is in the way of your arm. Councillor Goss rather than councillor Robinson, sorry.
It's close enough. I've been called worse.
Thank you, Chair. The restoration of, restoration of the mural as proposed and the community space outlined are, of course, most welcome in this development. But I would like some clarification on how, as stated in the report, and I quote, "well proportioned taller buildings constitute a positive feature of this part of the conservation area." Because I'm rather sympathetic to some of the objectors' points on that basis this evening.
Yeah, so that, I think, that part, essentially as part of the assessment of the application, we look at, especially when it's a conservation area, look at the conservation area character appraisal, which, which is done for every conservation area in the borough. That identifies the, at this end of, of London Street, not necessarily on the side of the road that this site is on, but on the other side of the road, there are taller buildings. And if you, if you go along London Street, there, essentially, there are a real variety in heights of buildings. And so you've got, you've got the ones immediately adjacent to the site, which are two story. But then you step up a bit further along, you step up to two and three story, up to, there are some four story listed buildings along there as well. Obviously, on the opposite side of the road, you've got the Great Expect, or what used to be called the Great Expectations Pub and, and a couple of others that are up to sort of four or five stories. So I think that's what it's referring to in the character appraisal in terms of, you know, tall, tall, well, taller buildings are not an unwelcome addition to parts of the street scene here. And so introducing a new taller building, well, taller than the immediately adjacent buildings is not necessarily something that would be a negative to, to the conservation area.
Richard Etoff would like to just add something in at this stage, so.
Thank you, Chair. Officers have just been discussing another issue. It was, it comes as on the back of something that the objector mentioned, actually. And it's to do with the sensitivity of the adjacent listed buildings. I'm aware from Historic England guidance that there's wider effects on the fabric of listed buildings from, from developments, either when they're being built or the operation of adjacent developments, which would have an impact on their fabric. And there should be a material consideration in, in planning decisions. Now, this is something we've not specifically, I think, taken into account before. So it's not something we're particularly well versed in, but we would want to be careful in this case. It could be that in the construction method statement, we look at something that has extra sensitivity to the adjacent listed buildings. We're also considering the possibility of a, of a condition that perhaps you have some sort of conservator oversight or something to just make sure that that is handled sensitively when they're demolishing those parts of the building that need to be demolished. But we haven't sought this through. But with your blessing, we'd like to be able to have officer delegated authority to work out what might be the, the, the correct form of control on this point, please. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll remember that at the end. Thank you. I've got councillor Cresswell, I think is next.
Thank you, Chair. It's very welcome to see a development coming forward on the site, as everyone said. And London Street is a very interesting street architecturally, lots of different building styles. This would be another addition. My question is about, it's coming off our objectors' point about the, the lack of features, particularly on the, the upper floors section and how constrained, yeah, those elevations we can see up there. It is relatively featureless, and Reading is very well-known for featureful brickwork. My question is about the process. How constrained, if we accept this as it is, how constrained are the developers then to make it look like it does in those very plain elevations, or can they vary it?
Do you want to respond to that, Tom?
So obviously, one of the conditions would be materials need to be submitted prior to construction. I think it's above-ground construction. So there'd be a chance for officers to essentially assess the proposed materials. And at that point, there are sometimes changes in terms of the types of materials and how they're being used. There's always an option to sort of vary the elevations at a later date if that's what the applicants want to do. But, yeah, as I said, the materials will be assessed prior to construction.
Councillor Robinson, I think you are now indicating.
Thank you, Chair. Firstly, in common with other councillors that have spoken, we certainly welcome a development proposal on this site, given the fact that it has remained empty for so long. However, this particular development and the plans I am not at all happy with. I feel that the design is unsympathetic with neighbouring designs in that area. And remember, this is a very prominent position, right next door effectively to the IDR. So it is visible from, you know, from some distance. I also have questions regarding air quality, which I haven't seen. Because it's so close to the IDR, you know, is this an ideal location for accommodation of this sort? The other major red flag I have, and this was highlighted by councillor Josh Williams, and that's around the actual community space. When we have a planning application that comes before the panel, you know, to be faced with a situation whereby it's, oh, we haven't given that much thought yet, and we're waiting and we'll build it in later. If we are agreeing a planning application, we like to have everything in place so that we can actually give the recommendation, yea or nay at that stage. So for me, at this point in time, I will have to, you know, go against the recommended action to grant this. I'm not happy with this particular design or ride development. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Lang?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr Osami. And it's Mr Hall, wasn't it? He showed us around the... Sure, Hall. Yeah, sorry, apologies. And obviously, Tom. I was one of the quite a few councillors that visited the site. Others didn't, and they're commenting on certain things, which does surprise me in a way. With the community space, I mean, some of the feedback we have is that sometimes the council do things to us. So isn't this an opportunity to have a blank canvas and a community area that can be designed by the community and have some input into it? Like a building design-type thing. So anyway, that's my comment on that. So I'm going to say, this is where we are. It's been a long time. It states in the report of being in an area of significant heritage value. But as we know, residents, long-term residents of Reading, the site is an area of significant heritage value. It's listed in the local plan as stated as a potential residential development site for eight to 12 properties, residential properties. I know we've gone over that. We should discuss that and mention that in a minute. Since closing its doors in 2006 or thereabouts, the priority of councillors was always ensuring the site's community use and, of course, preserving the future-proofing of the mural. I recognise, we recognise, it's a complicated site, and the mural is an integral part of this application. My background's in construction. I do realise how these separated walls, retaining walls, are quite complicated. You know, the site would have got better value, I suppose, if we hadn't guaranteed the mural. I don't know how much. You know, maybe if another application would have come in, it may have been quite considerably taller to get over the viability issues. So the developer has more than showed due diligence for this. He's consulted, you know, committed to the mural. There's a sizable amount of community space, yes, reduced, but it was explained to us on the site visit that the reason why there was such a more, 596 square metres was because it took into consideration the sort of like the storage areas and stuff like that. I take on board, you know, that the community areas haven't got a toilet and kitchen facilities, but there's nothing that can't be sorted out at a later date on a design and build. I mean, they've got over so many hurdles to get to this stage. They are relatively minor issues, you know, and that's from my construction background. I keep flagging up all the time. So we move on. We move on to the residential side. Yeah, 17 units, 10 family-sized units, as it states in the report. This significantly exceeds our policy requirement on mix. Yes, we've only hit 11.8. And of all the comments, I mean, all the comments on affordable, nobody flagged the thing. These are two properties, one for ground-floor properties, the three-bedroom with direct access to a courtyard. Always a fan of courtyard developments. If you want to butter me up the right way, put a courtyard in, and I'll always look at it favourably. So there we go. So we've got a three-bed, yeah, access onto it, one bed. It was explained it was in studio form, studio form, so we'd have some sort of daylight. I take on board councillor Robinson's point about air quality and stuff like that, but it's next to the IDR. Right, so moving on, and this is the elephant in the room for me. The housing development team were consulted as part of the application. Their view is that a registered housing provider would be difficult to secure due to the management issue of the site. It's a complicated site. We had the waste management clarified by Tom. You know, I think that's a lot better, the entrance around the back and all that, you know. I would like it minuted, and perhaps if the Chronicle are listening, James Aldridge is one of the two, he can quote me on this. He sometimes leaves out important quotes, so this is an important quote from the League councillor for planning and assets, right? "I would like it minuted, and I can't speak for the committee, but I speak for myself, yeah, that councillors on this committee, they are, just contradicting myself, would hope that RBC would take up the option. We have a town centre location which offers an opportunity for RBC to manage properties as part of a small-scale, tenure-blind mixed development. This would set a good example for other providers as well as ensure these onsite affordable homes are not lost." I will also add that councillor, and it said, "we are the best landlord in Reading." So ticking boxes, protecting the mural, community space, design and build, good quality family housing. Yes, 11.8%, but we've gone for quality over quantity, I think. That's putting it politely. Affordable housing at affordable rent levels protected, and especially if we're the landlord, it also keeps, we've got a seat at the table which would help with management issues within the building. I referenced the Drews site, going back a little bit, where we said that we couldn't find an affordable provider because of management issues. And we had to go out to shared ownership, you know, that was all very well on that. But here we have a chance to have rented affordable housing on a relatively small site. Wrap it up now, as I always say. So there's courtyard development, employment and skills contribution with my planning hat on. You know, so this isn't about any financial gain. This is about a community building with an important mural where development and residential development is making the site viable. That's the important thing. So as I always say, and will continue to say when I'm positive with an application, it's about the benefits for the wider community. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Cresswell, and then councillor Rowland.
Thank you, Chair. Getting briefly back to the brickwork. I know that it says in the report that samples will be for approval, and I wondered if that could potentially go through award councillors. But mainly, I want to encourage the developers to look at the brickwork in the Cates Grove area and appreciate the multi-coloured pattern brickwork that we see all over Reading. And it's quite a signature of Reading. And so a monochrome brick building is actually quite unusual in Reading. So if some of that style of brickwork could be adopted, then I think the building would be better received.
And councillor Rowland?
Thank you, Chair. And there have been a number of comments this evening about the design of the building. And I don't know whether it's possible to put the facade, yeah, yeah, perhaps that one will do. You know, I oftentimes speak about heritage properties and those kind of applications when they come forward. I've heard the actual concerns about little or no features expressed by the objector and also expressed by councillor Cresswell. And I would like us all to reflect on the fact that sometimes, not always, but sometimes, you have got something of such stellar importance that your buildings or the elements that relate to it should be subservient. And this is exactly what this structure has done. This is what this structure delivers. And I actually cannot thank colony architects, who are not always so quiet in some of their proposals, for actually really taming this down and making it as subservient and recessed, not only in its form and mass, but also in its footprint by stepping back so that we still see the gables on the end going up London Street. And there is a beautiful view, actually, of those buildings going up London Street at that end gable. And you will still be able to see that. That is commendable. And when you look at the view that we have in front of us, that just flipped. But, yeah, but that's true. That was the one on London Street there. But when you look at this view, it is subservient. What do we all see there is the mural. And that is all we have ever been after protecting and ensuring that it is with us for a good, long time. And I want to very much commend the three and a half years of really hard work. There has been a lot of going back and forth. I also want to commend that in later discussions with the CAC, I know, and others, that the front facade, which was a garage, if you go back and you read the CAC comments on this, was a garage facade. So you're still actually retaining even heritage from within the last 100 years. There would be no other answer to how you would respond with a building along here. The fact that it is slightly taller, the fact that it is slightly, I think even someone said the word brutalist. I think we are past the brutalist phase in this world. But the fact that it responds in this unique, this very minimalist kind of situation, we've got solar panels even on top of this, and leading over to the IDR, where you've got a different kind of appearance altogether, is very properly transitional. You will not see this. This will not be the thing you will see. What you will see is the mural, and what you will see is this old garage facade. And they have delivered exactly what they needed to do. I also would like to commend the point of the CM Cubrel Consulting report that was in here regarding the structural assessment for the existing Black History mural and the way that they are looking to take care of it. It discusses vibration sensors so that during construction phases, if the mural were to be possibly, you know, at risk from that, that if that vibration was too excessive, that work would stop until that was reassessed. So every care will be taken in protecting that mural. And that is really what this building needs to respond to. I just wanted to say I'm happy with Mr Etoff's concerns about the buildings next to the listed buildings and that. And I think that that's something that definitely should be worked through, and I would definitely commend that. But trying to think if I had any other points here. No, I think that that pretty much covers it. But I would behoove people that wish to say that, well, let's go and incorporate the Cates Grove, you know, different brick. No, this is not here to shine. The objects that need to shine are at the ground level. And I would urge the minimalist approach of this building in what it's done and the massing that was really kept commendably down. You know, the talks were scuttlebutt, all of that, that it was going to be much taller and much grander. This is delivering really the right package in a reasonable and constrained size, and I would certainly like to commend it. And I'm really proud and delighted of the work that's been done. So thank you.
Yeah, I was carrying on from that, really. I just want to, I feel really pleased, particularly about the mural as someone who, you know, remembers when it was commissioned in 90 by the... That commissioned the mural. I believe it's firmly integral to the culture of Reading. And I, as a longstanding councillor among yourself, councillor Lovelock and others, remember the difficulties and the complexities to ensure that we got to a situation where the mural will be protected. It is incredibly significant. I sometimes feel I'm a cultural desert, to be honest with you. I do get about the Cates Grove brickwork as someone who lived in Cates Grove for a number of years. I do get that. I understand that. But sometimes I think I'm a cultural desert when I'm looking at brickwork, thinking, it's all right, innit? But, you know, I do get that. I do get, I think that's a really good point, because there is a lot of character around in Cates Grove. It's one of the best wards for character, you know, so it's an appeal. But what is of cultural significance to me is that mural. It is absolutely integral to Reading. I remember it. I felt so proud when it was being commissioned. We were one of the first in the country to produce a mural like that, at times when it was challenged in other areas, including London, where there was a lot of angst and confrontation and controversy. That was met with hardly any controversy in my, if my memory collects me, although I live in a bit of a bubble. And I can remember taking my friends' family when they used to come over from Marlins, saying, look at that, how great is that? Felt proud of it, and I'm really feeling proud today. The council have supported and protected at a cost, and we are totally unapologetic about that. In fact, we are proud that that mural will be protected. It's an asset of community value. Totally support protection. I urge the builders and the developers to protect that mural at all costs, to protect it. And would ask the, and that's why, I do get about other things about the building, but protect that mural, protect that mural. And I really appeal to the council officers to ensure and monitor that that mural is supported. And when that building, you know, with that same bricks or other bricks, whatever goes up, that mural is still there, and we can still feel proud and have a look and walk by and marvel at the detail on it. So very much support it. As far as community value, the community centre's concerned, I would expect that there will be facilities in that community. I don't think that we need to seal money is there, and I don't believe we would need to be pedantic about a... It's good points about the toilet, the facilities and that. I didn't go to the, I wanted to go to the, I think I couldn't because of, I think I had another meeting, actually, in the centre, because I used to use the Central Club, actually. I used to use it quite a lot when I was younger, living round South Reading and saw some decent bands and saw a lot of good stuff and public meetings. I remember going to see, by the way, this is self-indulgent but tough, Rudolph Walker, who I canvassed at the weekend, spoke very well at a meeting there. For those who don't know, Rudolph Walker is currently in EastEnders. Brilliant speech. For those who don't know, Rudolph Walker is currently in EastEnders. Brilliant speech. And I think it would be great to have a community value where culturally that can be used by the Black community. That would be a result after fifteen years of pain. Keep the mural, move forwards, get some nice brickwork and let's get that club back up and running. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got two other people who've indicated and then we'll try and pull it all together. councillor Cresswell, you wanted to come back as the Ward councillor, you're going to be self-indulgent here, or self-indulgent, indulgent?
Very briefly, it's a good point well made that the prominence stays with the mural and that is very well handled. All I wanted to say was about brickwork really, is there's more than one way to be inobtrusive.
Right, and then I've got councillor Davis.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. But I think councillor Cresswell's slightly put my mind at rest. But there just did seem to be a little bit of misunderstanding about what we're trying to do here, possibly from councillors behind me. The protection of the mural, which our colleagues have spoken eloquently about and councillor Ennis, as always, was magnificent and eloquent in his statement about the importance. The importance isn't just the mural exists and it doesn't fall down and it isn't damaged. The importance, the protection of how it's perceived in its setting is equally as important. It just is there. How it's perceived in its setting, I think this carries on from what councillor Rowland said, is that what is the backdrop to it? Well, how does it look from certain angles? And is it the thing that draws the eye particularly? And the, as councillor Rowland might say, the fanciness, because that's like an American thing, like garage, the fanciness of the features of the design, the fanciness of the brickwork, et cetera. There's a danger of that damaging the way the eye, the human level perceives that mural. And in fact, I think that looking at the current setting compared with what we see as the proposal here, actually the setting is enhanced by this application. I think the mural from Mill Road is going to look magnificent, much better than it does at the moment actually. So I am totally satisfied that that aspect of it is dealt with and positive. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, I'm not seeing anybody else, but Richard Etoff would just like to come back on a couple of things. Oh, thank you pardon, sorry. I'm gonna, the sooner we get this chamber back, so we've got people there and there and we can see each other properly. I do apologize councillor Goss.
Thank you, Chair. I don't think there is anyone on this committee who doesn't feel that the mural should be not only protected and preserved, but should be restored as well. We've covered this at length this evening. But that doesn't mean that we can't have a facade of the building that is sympathetic with the conservation area. Bearing in mind, we've had, it extolled this evening that the image that we see before us is an improvement on the current situation. Well, there's a very large tree obscuring the mural in that image, for one thing. But I entirely agree with councillor Cresswell that the brickwork and the features of the building should be more in keeping with what else is on London Road. And that does not diminish from the mural in any sense.
Thank you. Right, Richard, do you want to?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just, we've had quite a bit of discussion there and I just wanted to make sure we encapsulate the committee's wishes in the correct proposal. So we've got that the proposal from officers will be to grant permission subject to the section 106 as set out in the main report. In the update report, there's an additional condition regarding the hours of use of the community unit. We've talked in the last few minutes about the delegated authority for the further condition about demolition of construction. We were wondering if a compromise on the materials details might be that those materials details are discharged in consultation with the Ward councillors. If that is a proposal to put forward for the committee then please.
Thank you. Can I suggest that it's actually in consultation with Ward councillors and myself as Chair and the Vice Chair? Then we will all sit on it. Thank you. And before we move on to the vote, I'd say I am old enough to remember when it was a garage. And it wasn't just a garage, it was a police garage. And on my way to school, the police, those great big old fashioned black police cars would come tearing out of that garage and hair off in all directions. So yeah, there is a lot of heritage there councillor Rowland, you're quite right.
Yeah, I mean, clearly I agree with many of the comments tonight and, you know, mine to grant approval. I just wanted to deal with some of the points that have been raised by others in terms of design. You know, it's all about perspective and we have that debate always. And I just, I don't know, I just find it uncomfortable that it would appear some councillors don't have faith in officers on the delegated staff. You know, we do that regularly. And whilst it was a bit of a curve ball in terms of what was presented on the listed building, you know, I have faith in officers that they will go on and do that as they always do with planning applications. And I just thought that point needed making because it seemed that some councillors are not keen to leave the materials or indeed reference to the guidance on heritage buildings in their hands. But I just wanted to make the point that I am.
Okay, thank you. But we have quite often, oh councillor.
Seconded.
But we have on many occasions asked for that, people just be consulted and told what's happening. That's, I don't think we're not giving a veto or anything like that. We're just saying, share with the Ward councillors and councillor Lengham, not councillor, councillor Yew and myself, what the proposal is, so that we're all clear. Right, I think that's everything. And I think Richard summarized very well the need to add in the issues around the construction method statements and the demolition details and so on. And we've talked about the other issues as we've gone through. So I think we're now at a position where we can take a vote. All those in favour of the officer recommendation, please show. All those against? Right, that's carried clearly. Thank you very much. We've spent a lot of time on that and rightly so. It's one of the most important sites in Reading. But we now go back to item, can I get the right page open? Item nine, which is the St Mary's Churchyard.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. So full planning permission and listed building consent are sought to extend the existing dwarf brick wall adjacent to St Mary's Church House with the addition of black metal railings on top of the wall. So the existing height of the wall is 0.65 metres. The addition of the railing would take this up to 1.66 metre. This new boundary would enclose the service yard access from St Mary's Butts adjacent to the St Mary's Churchyard as it would be in combination with the addition of an electric keypad controlled access gate for vehicles and a separate electric gate for pedestrians. The pedestrian access opening is existing, so it would just be an addition of electric gate to that access point. The proposal also includes removal of an area of hard standing in the service yard directly under the mature plane tree adjacent to the churchyard, which is currently used for informal parking. And this would be reverted back to soil and planted with grass. It's considered that the proposal would have no detrimental effect on the appearance of St Mary's Church and its setting, nor the character and appearance of St Mary's Butts Conservation Area. And it is indeed considered that the creation of an additional planted area would provide some enhancement. The recommendation is therefore for approval subject to conditions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Karen Rowland, sorry councillor Rowland.
Thank you, Chair. As Ward councillor, I would really like to welcome this and thank the officers for bringing forward this and recommending this. It has been part of a wider body of works in line with the activity that we've had around the High Street Heritage Action Zone, which has been going on for the better part of three years, which has seen enhancements around the church there, in the yard with the addition of lighting and the cleaning of the Zen Zen's tomb, which I'm always very fond of, and the memorial too. So there have been a lot of works and a lot of concentrations around here. But for a long time, Ward councillors have known and felt that this area in particular here could respond far, far better to the fact that it's facing such an important church and such an important section of the conservation area within the St Mary's Butts area. And so we really, really welcome this. I know there's been a lot of work with our street team and all of that to try to get all of the elements right, going back and forth on it and to really resolve the problems. Because right now, and often, this can be a very ugly and unattractive gathering of bins and things like that in this back area. It also, so it will take care of that in an appropriate amenity type of fashion and respond favourably, I think, in its materials and its layout and everything. It's obviously very simple there, not too complex. But it will also address antisocial behaviour that occurs in the area when an area looks brighter and more put together and is more attractive, as this will certainly be. That too will cure a broken window that we no longer want existing in here. I think actually I would just have one question of concern as I went back and looked at this just in regards to about the management of the bins and things like that that will be going on behind there. And if there's any possibility of possibly securing that by condition or that kind of thing. And also just about the longer term maintenance of that. If you could maybe speak to those and reassure me a little bit or, yeah, thank you.
Do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, thank you. So this, the management of the bins was brought up during the application and the agent has informed me that they will be putting in a separate application to deal with the rest of the service area and to formalise the refuse storage area. So that matter's been reserved for a future application. In the meantime, for this application, we've, the plans annotate an area where there will be absolutely no bins kept to keep the accessway clear. But in terms of the formal storage of refuse bins, I think the purpose is for that to be dealt with in a future separate application.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, thank you very much for that. That's very reassuring. I didn't realise that was going to happen. And I trust I have reassurances that that's going to happen in some form of speed. So, yeah, that would be very encouraging. Beyond that, I don't really think then I have any questions. I greatly appreciate this and would welcome colleagues to accept the officer recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Not seeing anybody else. And councillor, oh, councillor Goss, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. As a historian, I take conservation and built heritage very seriously, as you may have gathered from the last interventions I've made this evening. What is proposed is both functional and aesthetic improvement to the area. So I warmly welcome the proposals and the design chosen as well because it is so sensitive to the existing, the remains of what is existing around the churchyard. I see in the report that two new metal pillars are required on either side of the gate that is proposed. There is a photo of St Mary's from 1875, which shows a specific design of iron pillars around the church. I was just hoping that given that so much effort has been put into a sympathetic solution to this problem, that perhaps that the pillars could be designed so as to replicate those that originally surrounded the church.
Do you want to respond to that? Thank you.
Would you like me to try? I know a little bit about this site because there was pre-application advice sought from officers briefly before it came in. I think what we've got to remember with this is there was a wall on that line. It's got a double function really. It would need to sort of demarcate the edge of the curtilage of the minster and also provide this function for security and keeping out antisocial behaviour to the service yard. We talked, I think extensively, with the Redder Group before they put in the application. And we've got a bit of a compromise here of historic versus functional. I think what they've produced here is something that can work, is relatively easy to construct, but has that sort of deference to the old parts in terms of, what's it, the sort of square pyramid tops and the sort of bull-nosed ends to think, you know, it's not, it's unashamedly not trying to be something that's, you know, akin to the, you know, 1,000 year old church or even anything from the Victorian era. But it's a relatively simple functional design that should certainly help and, you know, bring back that character to that part of the minster quarter.
Thank you. Right, not seeing anybody else. So councillor Robinson, I'm afraid I have to say that you can't vote because you left the room. We just need to be clear about that because people need to have heard everything that's said. Right, everybody else but councillor Robinson, can I see all those in favour of this application? Thank you very much. That's it, thank you. I don't, I don't think the September committee is going to be quite as short, although this wasn't that short, was it? But thank you all.